The agenda, so agenda item one, apologies for absence and declaration of substitute members.
Thank you, madam. There's a full complement of members, no substitutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, disclosure of interest, to deal with any disclosure by members of any disclosure for opportunity interests and interests of the opportunity interest as defined under the C4 Town Council Code of Conduct and Localism Act 2011 in relations to the matters on the agenda. I've got a personal interest is that on agenda item, sorry, planning application item LW21009382, Herdis Road, so I'm a personal friend of one of the neighbours. And at that point, we'll be asking Deputy Chair, councillor Hanneman, to step in to take this item. If all the committee agrees with that.
Thank you, that's noted, madam, thank you.
Thank you. Item three, to do public participation, to deal with any questions or brief representations from members of the public in accordance with the relevant legislation and C4 Town Council policy. In accordance with Town Council policy, members of the public wishing to speak on individual planning applications may do so immediately before each planning application. So at this point, if then members of the public like to speak on non-planning applications. So we move on to planning applications received in week commencing Monday the first of March. LW21004789 Clementine Avenue, erection of single-storey family room in rear garden, part retrospective. Any members of the public like to speak on this application? Yes, Mr Lyons, would you like to unmute yourself? And you have five minutes.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
So, thank you for the opportunity, councillors and chair for allowing us to share our side of the story. So my family moved to 89 Clementine Avenue in January 2015. And I just want to give you some context of why the application is part retrospective. I was under the impression that the dimensions of what we had planned fell under permitted development. A building 2.5 metres high with a footprint of eight metres by four and sighted at least one metre away from my neighbour's fence. As the aerial photos that I sent in yesterday will hopefully highlight, there were several outbuildings, sheds and summer houses along the strip where we live, and they are within 20 metres of the northern boundary. This led me to believe that the building we had, the family room, was falling under permitted development. So in early September, groundwork took place at our property. On September 22nd, before construction work began, I submitted a pre-application to Lewes District Council, just to sort of double check really. In late October, I asked the builder who was constructing our family room to begin. And I think it's important to explain why I sort of did this and jumped the gun, as it were. During the first lockdown, my wife was diagnosed with cancer. And as many business owners will know, I'm a self-employed man. It was a tremendously tough time, that first lockdown period for people. And I was trying to fight to sort of keep my business afloat and deal with the challenges of homeschooling a young child. So we needed the family room, and we still do, to provide a place of escape where we could relax as my workers, as you can probably see, has overtaken our living room. And my wife needed a dedicated sort of space to relax and try and convalesce and recover. Now, due to Covid delays, on November 4th, I received an email from Mr James Emery from LDC's planning team, who informed me about this 20-metre boundary rule that I was unaware of. So I immediately told the builders to stop and contacted a respected local architect to begin work on a planning application. I also employed a respected property barrister, Mr Ezra McDonald, from Pump Chambers, to look into our deeds, to see if there were any grounds of concerns there for him, which he said there wasn't. So to the family room itself, we wanted to reduce the visual impact of the building on our neighbours at number 91. So we spent more than £4,000 reducing the levels of the rear garden, so the room would actually sit a lot lower. In November, we also planted 26-foot mature English yew trees to act as screening. We chose these because they are fast growing, on average 30 to 40 centimetres a year they grow, and popular screening plants. The family's room usage is purely for our pleasure as a place where we can sort of exercise, read, talk, relax. I believe it would create less noise or disturbance than a children's paddling pool or an outdoor table tennis table or a climbing room, for example. On the subject of badgers, I mean, there's no mention that I have found in our property deeds about any protected badger set or run. To give you a little bit of context about that as well, in July 2015, we cleared some hedges at the bottom of our garden. The area between these hedges and where our garden ends had no signs of badger activity and had already been cleared by the previous owners for composting equipment and a greenhouse. The clearing was visible from the popular path behind us where the farmers' fields are. And I'm surprised that if there was concerns then, that somebody would have raised them. In January 2017, due to a security incident, we put a fence at the back there. And again, no concerns were raised on the back of our boundary. In February 2018, we turfed this area, and I provided photographic evidence to support this again. And again, no mentions were made about badgers or sets, and there was no evidence. In September 2020, when the groundwork for the family room began to reduce its levels, we came across no signs of badgers or sets below ground or work would have stopped immediately. Yet again, no comments were made about badgers at that point. So for more than five and a half years, for us, there's been no evidence of badger activity in our back garden and no complaints made till now. In summary, I've given you some insight. I wasn't trying to jump the planning gun. I genuinely thought there was permitted development.
I must push you on because you've had four minutes.
Sorry. So just finally, I mean, in the last 12 months, if we've learned anything as a society, I believe it's the way that people are using their homes has and must change. Quite simply, we just want to enjoy our family room peacefully. So thank you for considering our application. And any questions?
Right. And if there's anybody else who wants to make... So I'll open it up to the committee. Who would like to read on this one? Councillor May.
Just to say, Chair, thank you that I actually did walk up this afternoon in the rain and walked along the back fence behind the property. There was a large area of screening of trees along that fence. I could detect where the building was because it just peaks over the fence height, but only by a matter of a couple of inches, I should think. To be quite frank, from my perspective, I think the original restraint on building within, I think it's 20 feet or whatever it is of the boundary, was to make sure that from the Bishopstone side, you couldn't see the housing development or anything in the garden. And from my perspective, I couldn't see it at all, really. Walking further up the hedge line there, I did find a badger set about probably 20, 30 yards to the north-east, going up northwards from that property. So there is a badger set there, but you know, that's all I could corroborate.
Thank you, councillor May. Anybody else? Councillor Borman.
Thank you, Chair. I think we've got to be careful when we, when there are guidance to say not 20 metres from the fence. There were reasons why this was put in place. If we start allowing it, then it starts allowing it along the whole way. And then it starts changing the whole view of the area. And we are bordering on the South Downs National Park. So I do think we really need to be very considerate whether we do accept or not this application.
Thank you, councillor Borman. Anybody else like to speak? And then councillor Hanneman.
Okay, Chair, I echo what councillor Borman said in a way, because it's been right on the edge of the national park and planning area. It's very, very difficult. In a way, I suppose if the fence hadn't gone up, then the idea of it would have been to have perfect views over the existing empty fields at this given time. Although who knows what might happen on that in the future, you know, in the next, however, many years. But we're just looking at what we've got at the moment, and it is very substantial for that particular property. I can't, I couldn't, couldn't deny that. So that's only my views. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, part of the history, I mean, the hedge, the boundary hedge, and it acts as a buffer zone because it is a sensitive area. Because it's the buffer zone to not only the South Downs National Park, but an area of outstanding natural beauty. And that's why it's so sensitive. And that's why that ruling was put in. So I tend to agree with councillor Borman on, you know, once we start. So, yeah. Is there any other comments or can I have a proposal on this if there's no more comments? Councillor May.
I'd just like to comment that if you go further up the hedge, some people have actually taken out the underscrub and left some trees there. And they've grasped in underneath the bigger trees to make a kind of little woodland glade. But they've left a kind of, it is a buffer zone, but they've kind of appropriated it as part of their garden, if you like, the actual hedge. So there's contradictions in that. I think some people have done different things with their border and have encroached into the hedge itself. If you go further up, someone has actually got a lookout point. There's no hedge at all, and there's a lookout point, and you can, they can sit there looking straight out to Bishopstone. But that is quite a bit of a way further up the hedge line. I just wanted to fill you in on that, sir, because it's not like this is a hedge row that is completely intact all the way along. And also, a lot of the other gardens do have fences to the garden side of the hedge. Personally, I don't know what the legality is of a restriction that has been put in place 20 years ago. And this may seem odd coming from a green councillor, but I don't have a problem with the building myself. I would support this application.
Again, do you want to come in at that point?
Yes, thank you. It's a difficult application. There's a very fine balance to be drawn between the two sides. There's planning, good planning considerations on both sides, really. So, you know, it might help if I made a few comments before you go to a vote either way. Yes, it is quite an old condition, but I think that the special layout of Clementine Avenue explains the reason why this condition was imposed. Conditions taking away permitted development rights aren't imposed as a matter of course, and they have to be drafted in a certain way, in order to take away those rights. It has to be specifically stated in the condition that it's an intention to take away permitted development rights, as in this case, the condition is still there. If the condition had just said, no building should be built within 20 metres of the northern boundary, that wouldn't have been valid. So as I said, there has to be a special reason, as councillor Borman explained. And I had to check that this condition actually was in the correct form to be effective to take away permitted development rights, because it's not something that's done lightly. I think the reason in this case, going back to the planning brief for Clementine Avenue, when it was Valley Dip, I think in 1986, which is a couple of years before the permission was granted, is clear that there was a lot of concern about the view across the open land to Bishopstone Village and that the impact that this new development, as it was then, might have on those very important views across what was then an area of outstanding natural beauty. And that is why, depending on the contours of the land around there, that's why you've got a mixture of two-storey houses, bungalows, and these very specially designed low-profile bungalows in the area of number 89, in the phase of the development around number 89, in order to retain that view across. And it's quite clear in the planning brief that the condition, it was a strong recommendation that that condition should be imposed on future development and that the main intention being to ensure that no buildings that would have an impact on the view across should be built up against the boundary. So as I say, this building, it is, it goes just above the height. And so it is in the sensitive area. And it is, although it goes back to the 80s, it is still an established and strong condition and an enforceable condition. On the other hand, you can understand the applicant's confusion over it because it is an unusual condition and it was something that he hadn't been informed about until the matter came up with the planning authority. He has quite strong personal reasons, family reasons for wanting it. He hasn't acted in any way knowingly, contrary to the planning regulations. He gave a full explanation of that. And there have been, as he has said, different treatments of the gardens as far as outbuildings concerned and as far as boundary treatment is concerned, because you don't have a development like this established for 20, 32 years without there being some different sorts of treatments of the garden. Fences, thinning out hedges, thinning out trees, turfing, et cetera, et cetera. So you don't end up with complete uniformity. But the overriding principle in this case is to not have any impact on open views across the open land to Bishopstone Village. That was one of the main concerns of the planning brief. So as I say, there are fine planning considerations on both sides. But the overriding principle is the impact on the views across. And that's something that obviously you have to make a judgement about. Thank you. I hope that's helped. It might not have done, but...
Thank you. Anyway, we've got a proposal on the table proposed by councillor May. Does that find a second to support this application? Councillor Edson, do you want to make any comment, councillor Edson? No. Okay. So can I have a show of hands of supporting this application? You have muted, Chair.
Five in favour of supporting the application.
And those against?
That's carried 5-2, 5-3, sorry. Five votes to three, motion to support the application.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Move on to LW2100289 Colton Road, sent for a retrospective application for real balcony. Yeah, for real balcony. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Edson.
Thank you, Chair. I noticed that the balcony is along the entire width of the house and the party, the party war, as it were, there's a bedroom window quite close to the end of that. And I just wondered if we could insist on some form of privacy for neighbours with that.
Yes. Are you making a proposal, councillor Edson?
Yes, I'd like to make that as a proposal to a condition of supporting the application.
With the condition of a screen on the party boundary? Thank you. Does that find a second, councillor Borman? Do you wish to speak on the application? No. Any other comments on this application? No. So we've got a proposal to support this application. And if we can have like an obscure glass screen on the boundary side to be semi-protect, because it's a semi-protect dwelling, to protect the privacy of that bedroom window.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So can I have a show of hands for supporting this application, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimous.
Thank you. LW21005920 Hill Rise, proposed direction of a single-storey rear extension, installation of a biolux roof light to existing first floor, and erection of a rear dormer to allow installation of the internal lift shaft. Any members of the public like to comment on this application?
Yes. My name is Tony Lehman. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, my name is Tony Lehman. My husband, John Walsh, is also named on the application. He grew up in number 18 Hill Rise, having lived there throughout his life with both his grandparents and his parents. His aunt and uncle built number 20 next door in 1960, when John was only eight years old. So this house has been in the family for over 60 years. We cared for his uncle for five years, and the house has now been empty for over nine years while it's been in probate. We want to keep it in the family for as long as possible. The house has been designed to accommodate the future needs of John, myself, and possibly his older sister, because we're all nearing or over the age of 70. The small, original house has never been altered or updated since it was built. We are doing our best to keep to the original footprint and features, but there is a need for modernisation and disability adaptation. John has a progressive form of multiple sclerosis, and he's likely to become wheelchair-dependent. So we will be moving from a flat without a lift to a house with a lift, which will give him more independence. The steps to the house and both the side entrances are very steep, and it's already very difficult for John to get entry to the front door. A lift installed within the garage will give John access to all levels of the house. The small dormer roof that you would see in the back of the house is necessary to accommodate the head height of the top of the lift. Nearby properties have dormers, and they are much larger dormers. The curtain kitchen is a very small galley kitchen with no space for a wheelchair, and there's no seating area. A modest extension will be built on the exact footprint of the current patio and will not encroach upon the privacy of next door. Prior to applying for the planning, the extension was discussed with the owners of number 18. It will allow John access to a suitable kitchen, eating area and the garden. John's uncle bought everything he needed to convert the law for his grandmother, but it was never completed. Doing so will give us suitable disabled friendly bedrooms and space for the family to stay when they visit. All the new windows proposed, both upstairs and down, have been positioned so as to not intrude on the privacy of the neighbours. We have known the neighbours, both next door and across the road, for nearly, well, some of them for nearly 40 years. We're all very friendly. We look out for one another and we help one another. They kept an eye on John's uncle and his house, and they have been helping us as well as we're planning this renovation. We have kept them informed of the progress of the probate, the sale and now the renovation. And they're very happy that the house is no longer going to be sitting empty. And we have discussed all of our plans with them prior to submission for planning. So we believe them to all be on board. Because of the extensive structural work and work that needs doing on the house, we are moving into temporary accommodation on the 12th of April. We hope that the plans can be approved and the works completed, which will allow us to settle in and enjoy our new house later this year. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, now open to the committee. Councillor Borman.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's actually nice to hear somebody say that they've involved all their neighbours and got the feedback from their neighbours prior to submitting a planning application. So very well done. Thank you for that. And looking at these plans, I'm absolutely fully supportive of this. It's not large. It's very modest extension. So I recommend we support this application.
Thank you, councillor Borman. And does that find a second, councillor Hanneman? Would you like to speak on this?
Okay, I agree with what councillor Borman says. You're on the right side of the road as well. It helps as opposed to the other side, which overlooks the national park, of course. So for that point of view, it's absolutely fine. And I think it would be positive for all the family's concerns. So I'd second it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? So can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimously supported. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll hand over to councillor Hanneman to take the next application.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, LW21009382, Herdis Road in Bishopstone. This is the paradox. It's already, it's one of these ones with the permitted development, the ones where you need the, if you do nothing, you get agreed anyway. But as we've got nothing to contradict it, I'm not doing as though Jeff will probably help me in a minute, get a bit of advice. Essentially, it's a balcony overlooking on the rear first floor, sort of balcony with a view going over the south-west of the property, isn't it? Or that part of the road. So I don't know if you want to just explain a bit clearer than Jeff on that.
Yes, it's part of the government's drive to relaxed planning rules generally and as part of coronavirus pandemic relaxations as well. It's a halfway house, really. It's a system that's been in place for a long time on agricultural buildings specifically, whereby you submit a basic set of plans. And the local authority have 56 days in which to respond usually on certain grounds, like with agricultural buildings, its appearance, landscaping, et cetera. It's been extended to additional floors of buildings, as in this case. So we're not always consulted on them. It's usually an internal process. But as we were specifically consulted on this application, I brought it before the committee. So if there's a response within 56 days from the local authority that a full submission, planning application is required, then that will be, the process will stop pending full submission of an application. If nothing is done within 56 days, the applicant can go ahead with the development. And there's been quite a bit of legal rulings in the past as to what constitutes a response, because local authorities being as they are, they often leave it till the last minute before they respond. So as I say, that's the procedure. We're not usually consulted, but we are consulted in this case. We're not usually consulted, but we are consulted in this case. And it's open to the committee to decide, not whether it supports or objects, but whether in the circumstances there's sufficient grounds to require a full application in this case.
So, committee, I'll leave it up to you, what do people, what do people think? There's, there's been obviously various objections, supporting and neutral by members of the public generally in, in the neighbourhood. The ones who support generally aren't saying any reason why, they just said they support it, I just thought that helped. But does anyone want to start off any conversation? Councillor Edson?
Yeah, can I, can I just point out, Chair, to the committee that the surrounding dwellings are all bungalows. And, and I believe this might be bordering on overdevelopment and turning it into a house rather than a bungalow. I don't know what you feel about that, but I ask what the other committee members, it's just that when you look on in the area, and I live in the area, that it's just all bungalows. And I think this, this would, would be slightly overdeveloped, I think.
Okay, any other counts, I think obviously it's mainly a bit of a property, isn't it? Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I agree with Councillor Edson, it is all bungalows around that area. And this property also had a application in two thousand and seven to rate, increase the roof height and that was turned down, refused back in two thousand and seven. And I think it is a character, it would be overdevelopment, it would change the street scene and everything. So I do think they need to put in a full application.
It is a sensitive area around that, back, back and onto the two five nine, isn't it? So, right, so is that proposed, Councillor Borman, if you don't propose it just then?
Yes.
Okay, so second, oh, right, Councillor Edson, then go on, as you spoke, Councillor Lord, would you like to speak?
No, I just think it should go to full planning. Anything like this is always, it's like trying to get through the back door and putting the council under a lot of pressure and just to reinforce what Jeff said. Because we're busy on other specific items, it always comes to the last minute, a snap decision's made and that snap decision then sets a precedent. So I think majority of people go through, go for a full plan application and I think we should do in this case.
Right, thank you for that. Anyone else wants to speak on it? No, we have a, I'll cut back to you, Councillor Borman.
Thank you. Can we obviously if this is accepted by the rest of the committee, put a note on it to Lewis District to actually get them to meet that fifty-six days rather than it just being missed? Because they are struggling with some of their applications and quite slow on some, so we don't want this one to be missed.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sure, I'm sure Jeff will word it accordingly.
I'm sure, I'm sure they make these a priority and, and calendar them carefully. But I will, I mean, if, if members wish, then I will say, you know, that obviously the members consider it to be out of scale and character, you know, with the, the surround, the, the, the character of the area was of the bungalows and this would, this would alter that character. And that it's important that, that a response is made in this case and, and in time and that a full application is required, or something along those lines, I don't think it's too rude.
Okay, thank you for that, planning also, Jeff, we will word that accordingly when, assuming that we agree for this to be a, go to a full planning application. So we have a second and propose, sorry, proposal and second, so always a favour to this to go to have a full planning application.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's unanimous with Councillor Warraven standing down for this, this item.
Right, with that, I should turn you back to our full Chair, Councillor Warraven, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Haneman. Right, we move on to planning applications received in week commencing Monday the eighth of March. L W twenty one, oh, L W stroke twenty one stroke zero zero eight six two A Northway. Any members of the public like to, Mr Ball?
Hello there. Yes, I am the owner occupant of two A Northway together with my wife and we are seeking permission to convert the existing garage into a kitchen, to remove a layland eye hedge and replace it with a wooden fence and to erect a wooden shed. In respect of the garage, as I stated, we wish to convert it into a modern open plan kitchen and this will involve a very small one point four five by two point four one infill extension at the rear of the garage. This extension is necessary to allow a link to the existing kitchen. The extension will, will be built on what is now a dark wasted space. The garage as it stands is not fit for purpose, it's too small for our family car. And following the completion of any work, there will still be sufficient off-street parking for two cars. In respect of the fence, the existing layland eye hedge is basically a giant weed, which is out of control, the hedge is currently in excess of three point four metres high and one point, one metre wide. There's a shared drain that runs through the hedge and so we have also concerns about future root damage. The layland eye borders upper Belgrave Road, which although residential is a very busy road, gaps at the base of the hedge makes the garden insecure for our young grandchildren and our pet dogs. We have problems with passersby throwing litter in the hedge. Removal of the hedge will increase the width of our garden by a metre. We wish to propose, oh, we propose to replace the hedge with a closed board fence. Our intention is also to plant vegetation along the street side of the fence in order to respect the street scene. The fence will consist of one point eight metre high closed board panels for security and privacy reasons. For visual relief, the fence will have a three hundred millimetre high louvre section running along the top. We've spoken to our immediate neighbours, they can't stand hedge either and there are no concerns with the garage. In respect of the shed, we propose to erect a wooden garden shed, which we will acquire to store garden equipment, grandchildren's toys and bicycles. That's it, really.
Thank you, Mr Ball. Open to the committee. Councillor Haneman.
Thank you, Chair, and for the residents' comments. Yes, I mean, I live a couple of roads away. I, I assume the owners at the time probably planted the, the analog for many such security reasons, but it does border on to the, on to up the Belgrave Road, which is often what they are used for. Now, they do make good boundary fences, but it is passing it almost every day, one way or other. It is probably, it has got out of control, it's very, very high. And, and as explained by the resident, it probably does upset the, the whole atmosphere in the garden and, and the other, and the house itself. So, so to take the opportunity to, to do the renovation and improve it at the same time, so I'd be in support of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Haneman, does that find a second, Councillor? Councillor Borman, if you'd like to speak. Any other comments on this application? No, so can I put it to the vote to support this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimously supported, thank you.
Thank you. L W stroke two one stroke zero one two six one, also place Furl Road. Creation of a first floor extension above an existing single-storey already part of the property, along with internal alterations and single-storey rear orange extension. Any members of the public like to speak on this application? I think everybody's gone now. Right, up to the committee. Councillor Mead.
I, I live quite close to this property. It's, it's quite iconic, that little, it looks like a little kind of Oxford quad or something like that. It's, it's, it's really sweet. However, I, I don't object really to what they want to do to it. Although it's going to change the, the, the aspect of it, the opposite side of the court is all single-storey. Whereas the side that this is on, what number one is on, is mostly double-storey and it's only the little bit right on the road and on Furl Road end that is single-storey. I can understand that it must be frustrating living there with that being, you know, quite a compromised space. So I, I would support the application because I think they are going to, from what I've seen of, of, they've, they've described, it's going to be all done completely in keeping with the original property. They're even extending the chimney, which is lower actually, to, to make it match the existing chimneys and build it in the same way. I don't have an objection to the orange extension out the back either. I, I would support this application because I think it's being built tastefully and keeping with the rest of the property. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Mead. Does that see your hand up, Councillor Borman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was going to recommend supporting it, so I'm quite happy to second Councillor Mead's recommendation. I think they keep picking it as much as they can, sort of using all the natural materials, it's all going to stay the same and it's very nicely done.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I totally agree that, you know, this is being symptomatically converted and I think at the end of the day, it's going to enhance the building. And so I think, you know, that's one of those where, you know, it can be done. Right, so can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimous in supporters again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you've been notified, the next application for three home field road has been withdrawn. So we move on to planning applications received in week commencing the fifteenth of March. And it's South Downs National Park application of S D N P stroke twenty one stroke zero 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 eleven stroke C N D. The land adjacent to two new cottages, the street Bishopstone Village. Variation or condition to approved plans relating to planning approval of S D N P stroke one seven stroke zero three three two four stroke F E L. Reduction in size of the entrance door and erection of a small extension. As there's no members of the public, we go straight to the committee. So who would like to lead on this one? Anybody? Councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I looked at the plans, reduction in the door size, not an issue. The small extension is just that, a very small extension too. So I'm quite happy to support this application.
Thank you, Councillor Borman. Does that find a second, Councillor Eberdon? Any other comments? So can we put it to a vote for supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimously supported again.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask, Chair, how, how did that application ever get through in the first place? It's absolutely enormous that. I, I couldn't believe it, I walked the dogs down there and they've only built about one-eighth of it or something and that looks absolutely enormous just by itself. I can't believe it.
It was, yeah, past, I know, I know there's some, some residents in the village are sort of not very happy about it. I don't know if it's the colour they're using, which is enhancing the size of the building. I know it was slightly taller than the original building, what was there, grainstone.
It, it's also owned by a kind of farming conglomerate that's based up in Northumberland, so it's, you know.
Yeah, I know there's various farms, one over, the main one over, and this is another one in Sussex.
Sorry, I just, just had to comment, sorry, Chair.
Yeah, no, thank you. Okay, moving on to tree work application. T W stroke two one stroke zero zero one five nine Charlton Close. Proposal is T one layland eye cypress fell to be felled, it's dying. T two, T three and T four fell ash trees infected with ash dieback. And T six elm removed major deadwood and been crowned by twenty percent to allow wind to go through the ground. Who would like to lead on this one? Any other, Councillor Mead?
I, I'm, I, I mean, I think that, you know, tree work that has to be done because trees are diseased or whatever, well, we, I, I personally feel we have to let that happen. I've got no objection to the elm being reduced and the deadwood cut out. My, my contention would be, is there any order on replacing the trees that have died? If there's ash dieback, we, we have to get rid of the ash because it's got dieback, that's fine, that's a disease. But can't, can't we ask them to replace? It doesn't have to be with like, I don't know if you can get resistant ash trees yet, but can, can we ask that they, that the three, the four trees that are taken out are replaced with something at least in the way of trees? Jeff, can you advise on that?
I think as a matter of course, the tree officer would require, well, where it's, where it's feasible, which it would be in most cases, require replanting, yes. But, I mean, the, the whole basis of the application is obviously to take, to take away the diseased trees. But as I say, as, as part of the consideration of the application, the tree officer would make recommendations for replanting and include that in his decision. As, as the, as the Chair has said in the past, we would normally by now have, had the benefit of a briefing by Daniel Wynn, which he routinely gives to, to new parish councils as to his work and how, and, you know, the ins and outs of dealing with tree applications. It's a pity that because of Covid, we haven't had the benefit of his, his sort of regular briefing. But I think as part of that, he would, he would, you know, we would talk about replanting and he would mention it. So as soon as we can, we'll get him over and get the benefit of his wisdom.
Can I just, you, you, you said it would be probably a recommendation, Jeff, but that seems, seems to me that, that that's not necessarily particularly enforceable unless it was a statutory requirement.
Well, it, it, it would be a requirement, like, like a condition on the planning application. I mean, I haven't got the, the text in front of me, but, you know, I feel, I mean, there's no point in having a preservation order unless there is a power to replace trees. And I, I, I don't sort of scrutinise the decisions. We don't really get details of the decisions of tree applications, but I feel that there would be replanting in, in appropriate cases, yes. And, and he would recommend the, the species of tree, you know, he wouldn't be recommending ash anymore.
Councillor Lord, are you wishing to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair, it's only a very quick one. I do get involved in tree preservation orders and if you, you, you have to put at least one tree back. Normally they prefer to put more than one back, could be two or three, not necessarily in the same area, but the same geographical area. So it, I've never come across a case yet where you take a tree down and don't put anything back in its place. It's just unheard of. So one comes down, at least one or two goes back. So it, it's not part of the planning application here, but it's part of the condition when you take a tree down, thank you.
To answer your question, Councillor Mead, yeah?
Thank you, Chair.
Very good. So can we have a proposal on, on this application, please? Councillor Mead, and seconded, Councillor Lord, and can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's supported unanimously. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's supported unanimously. Thank you.
Right, we move on to agenda item five. And uh, if uh, to inform the committee of the proposed new parking restrictions and seek any comments.
Yes, apologies. Sorry, madam, apologies for bombarding you with all the plans. Uh, if I were in the office, I would have been able to extract the plans and re-scan them and and just make sure that the the relevant Seaford plans were appended, but uh, uh, I haven't been in the office for about a year or so, so I I doubt whether I could find my way there actually. So um, I'm afraid it was easier to uh, just send the whole bundle of plans and apologies to leave members to extract the relevant ones from the bundle. Hope you found the other other proposals interesting though. Because obviously, as you're travelling all around the district, then you you've got an interest in knowing what's happening around the district as well.
Thank you. Uh, and it's self-explanatory within the reports, so we're uh, we've already um, been consulted and made comments on Warwick Road, Sherwood, Way Parade, Broad Street, junction of Vespolata and Martello Road. Um, unless there's any comments on Milburgh Road, Road Saltwood Road, um. Uh, if there's no further comments, does anybody want to make any further comments on on this? Then can I have a proposal that we're recommended to agree? Any further comments on proposals for forward to East Sussex County Council? So has this none? Councillor Borman? Uh, second up? Councillor Edson, I'm going to have a show of hands, please.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimous, then. No objection be raised to any of the proposals. Okay.
Thank you. So agenda item six, planning enforcement for 10 Blatchington Hill and 3 Sherwood Road on page 28 of your agenda. And would councillor Meek like to um, sort of lead on this one as you, you know, um, meaning sort of close um, correspondence with uh, with neighbouring property?
Uh, th- thank you, Chair. I mean, it's difficult keeping up with all the emails um, that local residents keep sending to the planning enforcement officer, Simon Cullen, uh, to try and get something done about, well, to try and get some answers actually, as much as to um, to to get some result on traffic regulation on Blatchington Hill, which is still a problem. However, I don't know if you saw it, uh, Jeff, amongst all the bump I sent you, um, that it now transpires that the um, the developer did in fact put a, put a traffic, traffic um, management plan in to Lewis District Council at the very outset. But for some reason, it got missed and they didn't process it. Uh, and now the residents are going, oh, I see. So you've had it all the time, but you never processed it. And um, and that's why we've been putting up with no traffic management uh, enforcement on Blatchington Hill, which causes quite a lot of, um, I think, risk and um, uh, you know, in people being indisposed at quite a lot of times, particularly the the neighbour just up the hill, who often can't even get his car out because there's a cement lorry or something right beside it. Um, it it, I think, I think residents are getting very frustrated that nothing seems to be going forward. Um, uh, and uh, I I'm finding it very difficult as a local councillor for the residents to know what to say to them when um, there doesn't seem to be any action taken. Uh, and and you know, I'm I'm new to this game, so um, it's difficult to know what the legalities are, but I'm sure that Jeff is going to jump in and explain and help me out there.
Well, yes, I mean, I I I was aware of these breaches right from the beginning a couple of years ago, and the residents have been, and councillor Meek have been keeping me in the loop, but um, it seems it it, over the last three weeks or so, and I've been outdated by councillor Meek because I I don't, I'm not in the loop for every residence email circulation because there are quite a few residents pitching in here, understandably. It does appear that Simon Cullen, who has now taken over from Jennifer Baxter, who was quite longstanding, um, uh, you know, uh, number one enforcement officer or senior specialist advisor on enforcement. Uh, she left, uh, and uh, but now Simon Cullen seems to be settling in and 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 sort of taking up these longstanding controversial matters that have to a certain extent lapsed. That's the outbuilding at the back of 3 Sherwood Road and the the contraventions in conditions and actual approved plans for 10 Blatchington Hill. And and the latest news, uh, in in order to to update the report, which in itself is an update, uh, is that Simon Cullen is is threatening imminent enforcement action on the outbuilding of 3 Sherwood Road, which was always a bit of a monstrosity and in the wrong place. And also uh, chasing up a regulatory application for the discrepancies in the uh, in the actual uh, building of the extension at 10 Blatchington Hill, uh, the discrepancies from the approved plan. I think they're waiting to deal with some building regulation matters before that application is put in. So from the recent emails, I'm quite satisfied, putting aside their error over missing the traffic management problem, which I hope now that they'll they'll rectify. I'm quite satisfied that uh, the new enforcement officer is is sort of acting appropriately, if he follows up what he's been threatening, which he should do, obviously. So um, it's not a question of getting the council moving, it's just a question of ensuring that the district council keeps on the case because, as I say, this is a longstanding problem which needs to be resolved. So and as I say, I thank councillor Meek for uh, putting me back in the loop, as it were, because the loops, some of these loops are quite complicated because you've got a number of residents, as I say, pitching in. Sometimes I get uh, I get copies of emails and sometimes I don't. But anyway, I think that that brings all members completely up to date on what's happening there.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Meek. Thank you, Jeff, for the detailed um, report. Uh, councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, at Lewis District Council's cabinet meeting today, um, they looked at updating the enforcement policy statement. Um, so that will be actually on their website. So all councillors and all members of the public will be able to see precisely what steps and when kind of the the steps that the enforcement officers can take and what they can do. So that's actually possibly going to help with you. You will know and residents will know exactly the steps and which order they take them in. Um, so and it also can keep LDC to account that they are doing the steps in timely manners as well. So sort of let you know, councillor Meek.
Thank you, councillor Borman. Uh, any other comments? No? So you're reckon-
Sorry, Chair. Sorry, I'm sorry. Um, Jeff, I I did notice that it was quite interesting that one of the comments that Simon Cullen said was, oh, that there's there's some building control issues with fire regulation staircase coming up from the basement, which they wanted to look into. This is a basement that hasn't even got planning permission, yet he still seems to be sanctioning it from the point of view of making sure that it's health and safety uh, uh, efficient. But it hasn't even got planning permission. This is extraordinary way to get about things, but you know, there we go. Sorry, I just.
Um, does seem a bit odd, but anyway, if we get an application, then we can sort it out there.
Yeah. Is it worth um, making a comment on that um, to go forward to Lewis?
Well, what I suggest is that, um, you know, we considered a report because of public concerns about um, the enforcement problems at at the site and that we noted that um, the district council was proposing, you know, uh, firm action, you know, to do the uh, request for a regulatory application and enforcement action against the outbuilding and that uh, the council fully supports that action or something like that, just to show that we 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 have an interest in it and we want to see it progress, something along those lines, rather than just calling on the council to take action, make them aware that we know what's happening there, if that's okay. Sort of a narrative, a narrative decision.
Were you agreement with that, councillor Meek? And would you like to propose, make a proposal to that? Yep. And does that find a second up? Uh, councillor Borman? Unless there's any other comments, I'll take it to the vote. So can I have a raise of hands, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimous again. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, so I'm to agenda item seven. To inform the committee of the Lewis District decisions. I think we only had one decision, which was our own application. Uh, do you want to make any further comments on this uh, report, Jeff?
Um, no, well, the the Beech Hut application speaks for itself. That that was, that went through okay after quite a long delay. Um, as far as the other two are concerned, uh, in Chington Way, there are still, there's 31 objections and the residents are gearing up to submit supporting statements in objection to the committee meeting on Wednesday. And I think it's quite appropriate that we as a town council, uh, support the objections and put our own statement in. Lucinda Way is slightly different in that there were no objections there. It was our own uh, observation, if you like, that led to the objection that it was the that it was the only property that would be sort of raised to to, we had the roof raised to significant level in an area of bungalows.
Yeah.
And there we consider that, you know, our objection in a way speaks for itself and that we don't really need it to actually expand on it. Uh, it'll be in the in the report that's before members of the Lewis Committee on Wednesday. So it will be considered. As I say, the Chington Way matter was far more controversial and far more reason to sort of expand on our on our um, on our the resolution we took to object a few months ago.
Okay. Unless there's any comments, uh, can I ask the committee to note the report?
Thank you.
All noted?
So so can I just say something? So is someone going to speak at the, is someone going to speak next Wednesday?
You're not allowed to speak.
Right, okay, you're not doing that.
Yeah, it, it's quite a good idea. I've I've I've, in my role as a planning consultant, uh, I have the old client and I've spoken at Zoom or Teams meetings in Wieldon, for example. And there, where you have members of the public being called to speak, they often quite a few technical hitches, which delay the meeting.
Hmm.
Uh, it doesn't happen in our case. It's quite, our case is quite straightforward. But I don't blame Lewis for getting a a committee officer to actually read out a statement rather than have to refer to uh, somebody who might have been waiting a long time, might have gone to get a cup of tea or something like that uh, and 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 not be available. So it enables the committee to run more smoothly. So they had, as I say, they have this system where you submit a statement. It's got to be uh, up to X minutes or Y number of words, depending on whether it's the town council or uh, a an objector or the applicant. And uh, it it worked quite well at the the meeting where we submitted a statement regarding the Beech Huts. And uh, so that, and that's the system. So it's it's all read out by the committee. I think the committee secretary is the hardest worker at that meeting because she has to read out all the statements submitted. I hope they give us some free throat lozenges or something because she does more talking than the rest of the committee put together. But it it works okay.
So I'm happy with that. So so basically they go through the 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 consertees, and we're one of them, and they read out what we've we've basically done.
Exactly, exactly. And the objectors, and the objector statements as well.
Okay, thank you.
All supporting and object.
So uh, we've all noted the reports, so I conclude this meeting at 8:09. Thank you, everybody.